It is now one o'clock. Today is Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I want to call I want to call this work session into order. If you will authorize for new communication, Mr. Tony has some good information and information on this matter.
Thank you, Father, for this blessed moisture. Thank you for all our remaining blessings. Forgive us in our sins. Heal us from all our past hurts. Cover our families and friends and ourselves with your protective shield. Bless and protect everyone who seeks you. You heal the world of its sickness and bring peace to those in conflict in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will always be on your count. Commissioner Hess, here. Commissioner Risselton, here. Commissioner Risselton. I am here. Approve of the agenda. Do you have any changes to the agenda, Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner. Would you like to move to the item two D, the commission?
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? Otherwise, I will take a day in Washington for the agenda. We're going to approve the agenda. That permission, Senator Washington. Commissioner Risselton? Yes. Commissioner Hess? Yes. Commissioner Risselton?
Yes, thank you, sir. I want to welcome all of you to this afternoon's work session. One of the big reminders of what we're prepared and disclosures at any work session, no decisions are to be made. This is for conversation and conversation only. We will take all the information privately. And if a decision needs to be made, it comes right now and later on in forthcoming meetings. So for that, we invite anyone, member of the public, if you have any comments, questions, please participate. So at this point in time, on section two of the agenda, we're going to be talking about term limits. So let me at this time invite my fellow county commissioners to open up the agenda and set the floor for this conversation.
Commissioner Risselton?
Thank you, Chairman. Just to remind the audience today, this conversation was brought before the board of county commissioners two weeks ago at our regular scheduled board meeting regarding term limits for county commissioners. This topic was brought forward by a former county commissioner, Mr. Jim Montoya, and also concern was brought forward by Mr. Chris Maria, a businessman there in the community. So that's the purpose of this topic today. It's been thrown around for quite some time of asking the term limits extension or removing term limits completely to county commissioners. We are the only one, as well as Mr. Salama, the Senate room, the district attorney's office in the term of in Los Angeles County. The remainder of the elected officials, chairman, lived many years ago, and they have tons of term limits at this point. So the purpose of Mr. Montoya, as I've told you before, was his request for us to forward with this hyperinitiative. And that's the purpose of this work session today, to have this discussion open from the session, open session with our fellow elected officials and see where their perspective is. So I would appreciate if they were all to have an opportunity to speak an opinion of what their opinion would be or their thought process of lifting term limits for county commissioners. The current, right now, is a two term. And the cycle is every four years, there is one office which will be vacant. And then the following, two years is the following election for the other two county commissioners. District three and district one, district two is the one that is up now at the end of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And so that would be my seat. And that is the reason we're here today. They've been brought, they've brought this before us to open up dialogue and consideration and move forward. I voiced my opinion in the last meeting, you know, in session with Mr. Montoya and Mr. Maria, that I would not be a big proponent of unlimited terms for county commissioners. However, I would be in support of what Buffalo County did, and I still hold that position now, three terms for county commissioners. So that is my point of statements, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tony Hess.
And after hearing what Luis said, there's one thing that, point of clarification that I'd like to make. And this doesn't necessarily mean that the county commissioners are shoe-in for that seat. They still have to run against a more qualified candidate, and that should arise. So they still have, there is the opportunity of losing that seat, I think, correct? Is that clear to everybody, correct?
Yeah, exactly, Commissioner. The election process will still hold true with the primary and then the general election. So either party or unaffiliated, we still have to go through a primary election with any other candidates and then from there we go with the general election. It just would extend, allowing the ability for commissioners to run for one extra term. And then it's up to the general public to make that vote.
One other thing I'd like to say is, I think this would be beneficial because it takes a whole term for a new county commissioner to get his feet wet, actually learn this job. The second term, you're able to get things done. And I think you guys are all witness of us getting things done. We hold many seats in many different offices, you know, in different commissions and task forces. And anyway, it allows us to be better at it with our constituents in Los Angeles County.
Thank you. Well, let me, anytime a fellow commissioner comes to us with this mandate, we always want to communicate with our elected from the county. We wouldn't want to assume that in fact this is something that came from county commissioners, which it is not. So the verification is there. So I would like to hear from my fellow elected officials from the county if, as Commissioner Risselton obviously mentioned, extending the county commissioners to three terms. And if that is something that you will support. Before we go to the electorate, this conversation has to be amongst us. And then we also heard in the, in the communication that perhaps our constituents or even our fellow elected officials do not support it. So at this time, I'd like to open up the door for anyone that want to be being arrested and writing any comments. And I see a district attorney is waiting, so.
I just wanted to see what else.
Please.
Thank you. I am pleased to be here and I apologize that I'm not here as often as I probably should due to all the challenges I face in what's called the northern district of the third judicial district, which in some ways I feel is a problem and the opportunity would be to just term the full third judicial district. Although I'm proud of the work that the staff does in Los Angeles County with the support of the county commissioners here. My comments are not meant to be negative about any of the three of you because I think I each do individually. At least one of us, maybe several of us, have had strong disagreements in the past. But I think moving into work through those since, if I recall, in twenty eighteen, which was the second year of my first term. So I raise my views in two contexts. One is personal, and then the other is from the institutional position that I hold. When term limits were first proposed, you know, it's around when that happened, but I still remember when it happened. I was working with a number of high-profile officials in their administrations. I was actually opposed to term limits. But my view has changed over time and more recently has come from quickly to the opposite position, which is, I believe, term limits are not appropriate for dealing. And I say that not just because of the national level, which from my perspective has become dysfunctional. And I harken back to the time when I served in President Reagan's administration. I served in President Clinton's administration. I had the opportunity to work directly and closely with Senators Hart and Senators Worth, with Senator Ben Ives Campbell, and with, he's going to tell me because I'm spacing his name now, a veteran, the veterinarian, who was the senator of Republican senators. My comments come from having served in two different administrations. But what I can say is the senators and the Congress people at that time were willing to work without sacrificing their principles on getting things done, on accomplishing things that moved things forward. Not getting anything you want, but at least doing things that were for the benefit of the public. Sadly, I don't believe that is happening today. And I say that in my view as both parties. The models of both parties have been squeezed out and are being squeezed out. And that is also true in terms of our state legislation. I just came out of the Colorado District Attorney's Council meeting, where in fact, the conversation was the moderates of both parties are like in the national level, leaving only to be replaced by those who find extremists or alter positions on both sides. And we get into a situation here called Rattler, where there's a supermajority, which is in our party, the party I'm in. But I have to say, when it comes to public safety, I don't think I have the same public safety interest that I have as a moderate Democrat. And that raises a concern to me, even though they are term limited. So my current view is personally, the term limits are appropriate. I think two-year terms, the legislature, I mean, the people were very wise in doing so. All stay office, all statewide offices are two terms. And I do understand that the beginning of the first term is learning, but a lot can be accomplished in the first term and in the second term. I also see a number of statewide, county, county proceeding positions that are two terms. In fact, another gentleman who crossed paths with his profession, the current mayor, John Southers, about Passover County, is term limited to two terms. If there were anyone who by popular vote or properly get an extension of a third term, he could. I'm convinced of that, given what he's done for Colorado Springs. But he is choosing to accept the will of the people in terms of two terms. The observation I have about people who don't have term limits is not at all possible. And that I include here in the third judicial district. It is no secret that I have had or chosen to take on elected officials in the system county. In my view, we're not treating the district attorney's office properly. The more important is not just about how they treat the district attorney's office. The issue of public safety is not being there. And so I have sued the county commissioners there. Both Democrats and Republicans, because they've changed over two cycles. And the Democratic sheriff, who was proud enough to say in the litigation and in the most recent hearing where we were dealing with the issue of contempt of court for not following the court's order for the discovery process, mandatory discovery process, that it's okay, I've been elected for six terms. And therefore, no one needs to tell me how to do my job. As if what I was doing was trying to ask him, telling him how to do his job. I was just asking the constitutional protection for defendants and the rights of people in the public to have crimes prosecuted with all the core evidence for their reinvestigation being presented. We have sheriffs nationally and law enforcement nationally who don't seem to get the proposition that they serve the people, not all. Because I do believe there are a lot of people who do in fact honor their own. But for me, as I see it, as a general rule, nothing two terms is appropriate. Institutionally, I guess I'm in a position to say that I am not a supporter and would be opposed to any extension of term limits. And again, it's because of the bad example, which is not here in this room, but the example that I faced and any future district attorney would face in the other county. Having county commissioners and have a term longer than the district attorney would pose problems. In fact, it will pose problems because the commissioners can assume that they can wait out any district attorney, wait out any litigation, any district attorney may raise. In fact, I've heard that part was going on in Marford County because they're just waiting for me to be term limited out. So they won't have to put up with it. So my point is, and my position is, the district attorney's office should be no less and no more than the county commissioners. Unfortunately, the way the structure is, we order for there to be an extension of term limits for the district attorney. Each county has to pass for the district attorney a removal or lifting even for the third term of the term limit proposal. Which means that it's not a majority of the two counties, each county was passing. I have been blessed in this county with your work when we've tried to take on matters collectively to extend the public safety tax and other kinds of things. I even had to support the commissioners, the urban commissioners, when we tried to raise the initial public safety tax. Unfortunately, the same did not happen in Marford. Is not happening in Marford. And I do not have the confidence that there wouldn't be a concerted effort, even if they would be asked for if a proposition was put on in Marford, for them to support. And because of the institutional need of the district attorney to serve the same length of term as county commissioners, so that they cannot be just waiting them out, waiting the district attorney out, continuing to mess with the district attorney, which in my judgment, notwithstanding, four, four positive judgments in my favor on specific issues in that litigation. That's why institutionally, I say unfortunately, I think I'm in a position of opposing. Not because of you fine children, not because of Los Angeles, but because the district attorney's office faces the burden of having to be and pressure of having to be in two counties, one of which is not supported. And who knows if that might happen in this county in the future. So it's really an institutional structural objection, not based on the personalities here. I do know, because I have followed, that the three of you have helped bring this county forward since beginning of twenty eighteen. I think that's when, other than Commissioner Luis Moza, each of you started to join in different capacities. I will be the first to say that you all, three of you, have worked hard to bring progress to Los Angeles County. But I'm in the awkward position of needing to protect the interest of the institution of the district attorney's office. And that's why I hold the position I do in terms of opposition. Which would be different if in fact it was a collective effort by all six county commissioners to extend the term and to also support extending the same term for the district attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience or online? Any comments? Yeah.
Good afternoon. I'm looking for the record, actually. I started filming in two thousand and five, and I have every tape, I have every meeting candidates. This is, I think, the third time. No, 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 it's come up three times before this. And I'm not taking a side, I'm just telling you as an observer, that I've seen this, there's absolutely nothing new. Carrie can go back and look at the elections or go to the papers and look at it. But I don't think it's anything that close, in the three times, the same arguments have been presented, just as an observer. So if you go back from two thousand and five on, this is the speed, I think, the fourth review.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the audience, any comments?
And again, I want to remind all of you that this, again, is a conversation that we're having. But I think ethically and morally, it is some responsibility to bring it not only to our elected officials out of respect and out of courtesy, because we're going to get to think that. We want basically to get the opportunity to conversate and meet again. And if anyone of you wants to discuss with us later on, certainly, you're more than welcome to as well. But this is something that, again, is not coming from any one of the three of us. We want just the record to be completely clear that it was brought to us after the last county commissioners meeting. And therefore, it is now a responsibility to bring it to our, to all of you if you were to advance to our presentation itself. Anyone else? Yes, our clerk recorder, Carrie Apple.
Good afternoon. So I would actually like to say that I, I don't see it as a bad idea for a three term for commissioners. And that I believe that we should bring it to our constituents to make that decision. And I know in the past, we have had members that have looked good, times are different. And we're in a place right now where we should leave it up to the people to decide whether or not. My concern is, if we don't have people that run after a three term, what happens? What happens after two terms? It takes us four years to learn the situation. And then the next four years, we're, and our feet wet, and we're starting to get, you know, a good feel for it. And then the next term, you can make changes and do the things that you feel are right, but it's a constant learning curve. If we are pulled out of those positions early, what happens? It's, then we put somebody else in a place who restarts that at square one. I think if it's still true of that, that the people get to vote after three terms and they don't want you there, then they just vote you out. And that's even after one year and one term or two terms, they vote you out. So I think it would be a good idea to at least bring it to our constituents.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Can you assist somebody?
Hello, gentlemen. I think three terms, like I will just mimic and mirror what our clerk recorders said. We all run every four years. If the public feels they have the opportunity to vote us out of office then. I do think the first four years, you are learning the job, there is a lot to learn. The second term, you are getting things accomplished. As we know right now, we are facing a lot of uphill battles legislatively. We're the little man tracking the big man. And it's, it's hard to, that knowledge goes, that experience goes, those connections, the networking leads. And those are relationships and connections that hopefully we can continue to maintain and be positive and help impact Los Angeles County in a positive way. Just to be clear, since I was on from the beginning, this is to remove term limits for commissioners. It doesn't affect the other elected official's offices.
And it's not necessarily removed, it would be not in.
A three, adding one term, three, four years.
That is, that request, I can't even find it.
So what you're hearing is the model, we've been in the office for a long time. And this is just for public record or input, knowledge, public knowledge, as Mr. Porter said. County commissioners across the state are about fifty percent term limited, fifty percent not at all. Buffalo County just recently passed last year, all elected officials, three-year term, or three terms of.
Three terms.
In the assessor's office, do you have to state, how many assessor offices, if you off the top of your head, term limited in or not term limited?
I believe we have six that are term limited. We do have three counties that are appointed. They are not elected, unless Denver, Rockville, and there was another metro county there. They are appointed. And, but the rest are elected. I believe there are six that have term limits. And it is very devastating when you get an assessor into an office that does not know the jobs, the mandates, the laws. We are probably going to whip this one this year, that was a new reelect and the office vacated. And when you get reelected as an assessor in an odd year, when we get sworn in, you are coming into a reevaluation year, which comes with a whole Title thirty-two section law. So if you do not have the knowledge or have staff that can handle the job or perform the job, you can put your county in a very financially binding situation. You can get what is called ordered by the state, a audit or reevaluation order. The last one that happened here in Los Angeles County, I believe, was in nineteen eighty-six, and that was to the tune of over a million dollars. So watch county had one five years ago, and it was, well, like one point five. So having elected officials that are knowledgeable, experienced, and can perform the job is something that's very imperative to local government functions.
And the assessor's office is also, if you want to, after you become a licensed appraiser during that.
You must have some sort of license, yes, an appraisal license. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. One last call on this topic. Please, Mr. Eric Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, sir. Although not an elected official, I'm putting it right, the board, I do want to express that this is a matter that does impact the Department of Human Services, and I think any department's process can be period. Leadership is more than just managing and improving people or budget or item size. In our meetings, we've learned DHS alone is a large wheelhouse of programming and financial matters that, if I asked all three of you right now, you have a hundred percent grasp of, I can even say I have that. And I think that goes to all of the elected official offices as well. Our knowledge base, based on our kind of office, allows us then to guide you all as a board to provide that feedback and those of those people. My concern would be that just what we're giving you feedback, as you said, Commissioner Hess, is then we're losing that commission because of the term limits. I am in full support of the three-term process for commissioners because it takes me almost the four years to get commissioners, and I'm going to there to get you all into speak in what DHS actually looks like and the liabilities that create that office. So I think that's all I can say.
After twelve years in office, I would have all nine hundred and fifty.
The test is still hanging, I told you.
To Los Angeles County, anybody else?
One last call on this particular item. We really want to say thank you on behalf of the board of county commissioners. We take this feedback very serious. It is, is warm that we have the communication across offices. And this is one of the reasons why we call this work session. And we are interested in hearing what you all have to say. So, commissioners, any other conversation on that particular topic? Then on that, we're going to move to other topics. Mr. Tony.
The issue is, I don't know, the other topics is, sometime back the board expressed a desire to have a, this way off on a tangent, it probably doesn't concern anybody but us, but that is to develop or to have a conference room. And we're real close to, perhaps established, you have the board still has that desire. And that would be, yet on the first floor, where the building running the quarter right now is held. And I just need to ask for, if you still want to, just speaking with, developing that, of this room. I guess we get the effect of the elected's also favor to try to have one rather than continue to have conferences as a change.
Well, these days we'll learn to just be quiet. As far as a conference room, this first line, or anything that I can add, and me here personally, is just working out fine. My, I'm putting on my gray chat now. My, I'm looking at my four-H tab now, because I am a Fairwood member, I'm also a four-H parent and a four-H leader, we go through the planning and zoning area to get to four-H and we are, but there's a lot of traffic and June, July, May, June, July, a lot of traffic. So that would be my concern as to how you route those people. If you're having a conference and somebody needs to get in touch with one of our extension agents, you either have to go through Christie's office or I think that would be an issue we need to look at and I, my mind was speaking out of all the terms and on behalf of Lori and Kim, but I just know we have a lot of parents, kids, traffic going through there.
I think Mr. Salado would donate his conference rooms to us, we need a break.
Actually, that is correct, no one wrong or right to say that. I was approached by the board because they sometimes have, as you may all know, they have some space up on the third floor, but it is very challenging to get up the steps to the third floor.
Fourth floor.
Or the fourth floor, excuse me. And they sometimes have individuals who are otherwise needy and disabled or reading and other alternatives. And I've said to him that the setting applies to him, so the conference room is usable for anyone who needs to, they can work with the office administrator if they're working when it can be used. We can basically close off the upper floor so there's no overhearing of what's going on there and no interruption to the same hand or everyone. So we now have two conferences, this room and that room, which is available for any use. Again, that is because you all have the support, some reorganization of office space for the term itself, which allows us to have that kind of conversation on the floor.
One of the reasons it pops on my head is because when I go use the restroom, I see the lights off and, so like, it's kind of occupied.
You know, many people say I'm in the dark, since it's my time, I'm off in my office.
Bob, how, how big, you know, impact would that have on you?
Um, I don't know, so, the block, the block has a lot of, from fifteen to twenty to thirty years ago in there, all the people have been, I can't say it was in there, some have surveys, plans, some have vision maps, there was a public stay in there because it tried to be moved, but it wasn't, was not moved, was just, I guess, we might just move it to the extension, even though there's a lot of traffic.
The extension just evolved. The Department of Human Services currently has a conference room that's available to the county staff, I think, but it was just recently renovated, they can work between the evenings and close. So if there's anything that you all need that for, please let us know, we have an electronic submission form for you to fill out a little, maybe before we give our admin services to get that scheduled. We'll also be adding at the end of the year, we'll clear out that cloud if we're right in, a fifteen to twenty person conference room that I can utilize as well, and it will be through technology. So again, soon we will be able to, you know, as, as I said, so.
Well, there's options. Thank you. Glad to have you brought this topic up for everybody to be heard.
This is one of the most fulfilling work sessions that we've had for our month. We are finding some answers. Any other questions, any other, anybody else on this conference room? And once again, I'd like to say thank you all for attending this work session. We don't have any other items on the agenda. At this time, we're going to adjourn.
Second. Press your fist. Yes. Press your hand. Yes. Press your fist.
Yes.